Call the regular meeting of the Bucksport Town Council to order for Thursday, April the twenty-fourth. As you can see, this meeting is being held in person. It can be viewed on local cable channel thirteen or oh-three, or on the internet by accessing the town website at bucksportmain.gov. And clicking on watch meetings and selecting town council. Questions or comments may be submitted during this meeting by emailing slassard@bucksportmain.gov, or during the meeting by calling three zero seven eight zero three zero. I will ask if you have a cellphone with you to make sure it's silented. Silented, it's silented. It is on silent. Um, I'm doing the same. Um, if you are going to speak in the meeting, uh, for the, uh, benefit of the folks watching online or on TV, please come to the podium and state your name, and if you're not from Bucksport, state where you are from. And just, this is probably my last reminder, but, um, the sound system now in here is great, um, but it will pick up anything said in the room, not just right here, so. Now that we know all that, we'll call George.
Deputy Mayor Mark Eastman.
Here.
Counselor Jennifer Tarian.
Here.
Counselor Tracy Hare.
Here.
Mayor Paul Vissonette.
Here.
Counselor Paul Rabs.
Here.
Counselor Steve Bishop.
Here.
Counselor Ed Rankin.
Here.
Good, George. Uh, we do not have any president, uh, any town council recognitions this evening. We do have the consideration of minutes of our two previous meetings, our regular meeting on April the tenth, and our budget workshop last week, April seventeenth. Any questions on those? All the pleasure of the council.
Question approved.
Second.
All's in favor? Thank you. Uh, we do have, um, under receive and review correspondence, we have all in police calls from strangely enough, April tenth and April seventeenth. Any questions on those? Thank you. Uh, we do not have any ordinances to consider or introduce this evening. Uh, we do have two discussion items. The first is the report of the Infrastructure and Properties Committee from earlier this evening.
Uh, so the, uh, the committee met this evening to discuss, um, a request from the town of Orland to purchase fuel from, um, the town of Bucksport, and the committee voted to send that to council. Um, in the meantime, we're hoping an MOU could be discussed and put it on the next agenda for council. And then major.
Thank you. Any questions for Counselor Hare? And we also have an upgrade, uh, update, excuse me, on the playground.
Um, our economic development director is here, but this is, you had anticipated seeing a, uh, resolve on this agenda for the playground, and the reason that, um, you don't is that in, in looking at overall the playground, the, the cost for the playground is, was within eighty-two dollars of the three hundred thousand dollars that were allowed to spend on a project without voter approval. And that, that cost does not include the cost of the surface that has to be put down, the chips, that, um, that cost. And so Rich is getting additional information about, because we can't act like that is not part of this project. It is part of this project. And so, um, and it isn't, where does the money come from? It's the total expense that drives the need for that. So Rich is, has been on vacation this week, but has to get some estimates on the amount of chips that it will take to do that, and then, um, find some cost savings in that project to absorb that so that it's not over the three hundred thousand dollar amount. Um, I, I'm not trying to, I'm not negative, I'm not being difficult, but there, the charter defines how this has to work, and in looking at the cost of that, though, you have to consider what you're going to sit it on. You can't act like that's a separate, that, that wouldn't be right. So there will be a resolve on your next meeting after Rich has got that information, and we reviewed, um, how to make some amendments to get it down a few thousand it will take in order to do the surface.
Question, just out of the blue. We have a considerable grant money weighing out there, it's two hundred thousand dollars-ish, no grant money. Uh, and delay the question.
Well, the, if we had a half a million, it wouldn't matter. Because the, the issue is you can't spend more than.
I, I understand that. The thought process was heading towards, could we do it in phases?
I, I, that, the, I, I'm on the, I see where you're coming from, Counselor Rabs, I don't disagree, except this was something that went to the voters last fall, and the voters turned down increasing that spending limit?
No, no, not the, not the, not the limit, doing the actual.
I don't think we do it with a straight face.
Playground equipment, do phase one at minimum amount. Next season or if grant money moved to phase two. It's not the amount and the total, ju- just trying to.
Yeah, I, I understand that, and, and for this item.
Uh-huh.
People might accept that, but if you try to do that with, pick a subject that people might not be in supportive, and they would say, you just did that to circumvent your own rule.
Okay.
Underhanded.
Again, just a question.
No, and I, we, we, we had a terrible discussion on this. This was, this is painful in terms of, of wanting to get this moved forward quickly, and understanding the constraints we're currently under because of that.
I mean, one's a project and one's a timeline, two different things. It's still one project and over.
So that, that, there will be a, a resolve on the next. It will include some recommendations for how to absorb that and stay under the three hundred thousand dollars, because we don't have any choice. We want that to be constructed. We, we want that to happen this year. More pieces of it are now, need to be removed based on damages that, that had to be repaired. Rich, have I left anything out of this?
Maybe they can negotiate with us a little bit.
No, I screwed up. I made a mistake.
You know, no.
I, I, I did. I, I took it as play chips have to come each year. I didn't figure into the cost. It's my fault. There is no place to dump the chips anymore, because we put the skate park where the chips go, so it can't happen until after the baseball season's over, because there's mental parking, and we don't want to cause complaints with the neighbors, so we'll start over. When I get back next week, get in touch with the playground, and we'll do it right this time.
So if we do play chips every year, then what is the problem?
It's, it's, it hasn't been done in a couple of years, because we had applied for the grant. We didn't get the grant money, so it was all figured into that budget. The way was the big grant from the LWCF, which would have co- covered the playground and the tennis courts, and we did not get that grant. So the, the thought was the cost of a hundred fifty thousand would be absorbed from the federal government, and the town would be on the hook for a hundred fifty thousand and the chips. But when that thing come out, I didn't back out the fact that I gotta figure in the chips to that, so that's, that's where I dropped the ball on that, so.
He did not drop the ball. This is, he did not drop the ball. Rich, stop. You.
Are you on vacation right now?
What's that?
Are you on vacation right now?
Yes, but my budget's tonight and the playground. They had two very important things to me, so I am donating my time to the town.
How much are the chips?
What's that?
How much are the chips?
I, I didn't have, I didn't have time to do, I was on vacation this week.
That's why it's not here. It, it's thousands.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, because we have people that are wondering if they've holding up the money for it privately.
We can't. We can't do it. It still puts the project.
Yeah, it's the project, and I'm, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna finish my thought on that. The voters at referendum last November clearly stated they were not comfortable with this council having the authority to spend over three hundred thousand dollars on a particular item or project. I am go- I for one, as one member of this council, I'm gonna hold to that until the voters stay, stayed otherwise, and not gonna play games with it. I, I appreciate what we're trying to do. We're problem solvers here. I get that, and nobody wants to see this delayed, but this is where that is. Period.
It's from any source that.
And hopefully the voters can see the struggle to get playgrounds and eminences that I agree with as well, hundred percent.
And I think it's helpful that you said that, because I think sometimes, like in my mind, I'm thinking if we have the money, it's, but it's still spending it, regardless of how we got the money. Grants or gifts or donations, we're spending that money, yeah.
Yep. So would they negotiate at all with the quote?
They've been great to work with. Our person has, every time I said we need to change, change, uh, we've changed it eight times. Um, but the quote itself, no. Matter of fact, if we don't, we're gonna go past May first, so it's gonna have to go, we're gonna have to essentially start at square one because of the prices going up. So we'll, like I said, I made a mistake, and I apologize for it, so. Well, it's, it's what we, at, the voters are the ones who turned down the referendum. We didn't do a good enough job explaining the needs, the wants. It's just, think of it this way. You buy, you'll buy a, uh, truck for the garage, and it's two hundred ninety-five thousand. If we want to decal them lights on it, we can't do it anymore, because it puts it over three hundred thousand. It's, it, it playground, nothing's immune from it. We're all in, you know, we, we tried bringing that forward to the, uh, voters, and we did it a few years ago, and maybe it was too much, too quick to bring to the voters. And again, at the end of the day, it's exactly what the voters said, and we'll just go back to square one and start over next week when I'm back.
But as the town manager stated, there, we should have a resolve next time. Not should, I think you said will.
Will.
Where we have worked out the details on this.
In order to be able to move it forward.
Are we re- I, I'm not questioning what, our economic, I'm not questioning what Rich said. What I'm asking though is, are we really starting over?
It, he's talking about pricing.
Yeah, okay. That may be a negotiation point, too. Yeah, okay.
But he's been on vacation, that.
Right.
And, and I apologize. I didn't understand project, not project. I thought maybe multiple phases could.
If a piece has to be taken off this time, it's okay in the future to add to the playground.
Once this project is done, but if you say we're gonna only do half of it this year, and, and then.
Yeah.
Yeah. Half of it next year, and then, you know, that, that's a completely different discussion. It's not the project ever, but what, what's here right now? And the, and the chips become important, because there'll be excavation, and this is all gonna be rearranged in the process of putting this playground down, because it's a different configuration from what's currently there, et cetera, et cetera. And we're already doing the work that we can do to remove, in this project, to use town equipment and town resources to remove everything that's there and ready the site for playground to do things.
Gifts and kind to a direct vendor, still considered us spending? Like if somebody went to a vendor and bought chips, de- delivered them for us, to us, kept us out of it.
I'd have to ask our attorney. I, I, I don't know the answer to that. I, I think that. I'd have to ask.
No, it's all right.
I don't know the answer to that.
No, I was just sort of responding to what Luke had said about people interested in contributing. If they just went directly and bought them and just dropped them off, like, and they're there.
It seems like.
They've spent it, we haven't. That's all I was saying.
That would be, that item in the project would be zero, right? A show of the spin-dome.
Just a question. I wasn't.
I don't know.
Anything that runs through the town in terms of an, of a revenue or an expense counts as a cost for the project?
So, yeah, we would say yes.
So if someone from someplace else bought chips that, and dropped them off, but, you know, whatever that was, that might not, I don't know. That wasn't something that we, you know, someone giving us money, someone doing that, that all counts as the same thing. But I will check. We certainly will have a resolve for the next thing that allows this playground to move forward, but it, Rich was on vacation this week. Getting the additional information wasn't possible before we had to do this. And rather than resolve on here, and then get all ready to push, go, and say, we have eighty-two dollars of leeway here that we can do any problem solving with, with, as I said, Rich, who was in here on his vacation, and Assistant Manager Brandon and I went around and around about this before we.
I certainly appreciate that, but I feel like as much as a lot of decisions we make, that I don't have to like, this is, I, that, that's the right decision. I don't have to like it. But that's the, that's the better decision than the former option that you presented in terms of finding out that there's a leeway of eighty-two dollars. I think we would all probably agree that would be problematic, so. Okay, so we will, uh, table this item unless I hear anything otherwise. Table this, and we'll see it on our agenda on May the eighth.
Yep. I mean, if this goes up eighty thousand, can we meet next Wednesday and vote on it? I mean, I. No.
I, I won't have the time to get it done for you, but I'm.
Okay, fair enough.
I'm, I'm gonna get with Public Works, and we're gonna figure out how much chips we're gonna need, because we're gonna be excavating out, and it's gonna.
Okay.
It, it'll be a, it'll be a challenge to get it for the next meeting, because we're doing the docks and everything next week as well, so.
Okay, fair enough.
But the next meeting is the eighth, Rich, not next week.
Right.
Right, but I mean, with, with Public Works, they're on four days right now.
Yep, okay. Thank you, everyone. Uh, next, we have two agenda items this evening. Resolve twenty twenty-five dash five-one, approving the certificate of commitment of sewer user rate for the period of January first, twenty twenty-five, to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Question approved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All's in favor? Opposed. And resolve twenty twenty-five dash five-two, approving the quote for floor maintenance services at the public safety building. I will note, yes, I will note that, um, there was information included in your packet. Just a reminder that we received updated information after that, and the new quote is five thousand four eighty. I did write that down correctly. Yep, uh, five thousand four eighty. How would the council proceed on that?
Question approved.
Second.
Any questions or comment? All's in favor? Opposed. You. We do not have any reservations, appointments, assignments, or elections this evening. Uh, nor do we have approval of quit, claims, discharges, and deeds, but we do have a town manager's report.
I'd like to take a minute to answer some questions that have been addressed to some council since the last budget, at which we listened to presentations from non-municipal organizations that wish to receive funding from the town. First, the town council will determine what level of funding, if any, any of the organizations receive. These decisions will be made at their budget meeting on Thursday, May eighth, when they determine what budget to send out to public hearing in June. The manager recommendations presented are just that, recommendations only. As I stated at that meeting, all of these organizations have value, all do good work. However, given the very difficult budget season that we are in, our recommendations, we prioritize funding for the most local organizations that meet immediate needs in the community. Homelessness, library services, local volunteer food entry, our senior citizen program, public transportation, and healthy communities. The waterfront cleanup day has been changed from this Saturday to May third, from nine to twelve, due to rain that is forecast for this Saturday. There will be a guns and hoses picnic following the cleanup. Please bring your own implements, and we will provide trash bags. I sent out one of our new texts, my gov text messages, to everybody to let them know that, that we had made, um, that change. I still encourage more people to sign up for that on our, uh, website, so they can get such messages. Um, floats will be going in on Monday and Tuesday, uh, at the marina and the waterfront. As the marina and waterfront gear up for the season, please avoid the waterfront area near the marina and the town dock while these floats are being moved, since there will be a large crane involved. The marina will open for business on May fifteenth, and as of today, all public restrooms are open for the season as well. The Mary Jane Bush Expo for Disaster Preparedness will be held on Saturday, May third, from ten to twelve at the Brown Hall Community Center adjacent to the Elm Street Congregational Church. There will be go-bag raffles, guest speakers, and Axel the Police Dog will be present. Sponsored by the Bucksport Bay Healthy Communities Coalition, this event is free and open to the public, and we encourage people to attend to learn more about emergency and disaster planning. I would suggest that you start your day by helping on the waterfront. Go attend some of the disaster preparedness seminar, and finish up with lunch on the waterfront, courtesy of guns and hoses. It should be a great community day. There will be a blood pressure clinic at the senior center on April thirtieth, from four thirty to six thirty P M. This is a free clinic, and people can also bring their blood pressure monitors to be calibrated. Main Public Health Nursing will be attending this as well. There will be a shredding event at the senior center on May twenty-third, from nine A M to one P M. Public Safety will also be in attendance for the drug take-back program, if people have medications that they want to turn in for safe disposal. And the shredding event is free and open to any member of the community. I'm pleased to note that we received the required formal notification from Bucksport Mail LLC of the filing of the closure plan of the D E P for the Bucksport Mail LLC landfill. And then Buck Memorial Library, in collaboration with Bucksport Bay Healthy Communities, is doing a Tell Your Story, Write Your Story program. The goal of the program is to capture the voices of the greater Bucksport community through writing workshops, author talks, and writing a book. This program started in February but runs through June, and if you're interested in being a part of this adventure, contact Lisa La at the library. This project is funded through a grant from the Main Humanities Council. And finally, um, as far as dam stuff, there's no new information at this time in regard to the Silver Lake Dam. We still have had no response from Bucksport Mail LLC to our request for process to request additional information or no doubt to any meeting with them.
Thank you, Sue. Any questions for the town manager? Uh, we do have, um, for public hearings or the whole public hearings and approval of any licenses or permits, uh, we do have the outdoor vendor license for the Bucksport Bay Farmers Market.
Question approved.
Second.
Questions? All's in favor? Discussion of items not on the agenda for council and public. Let's start with the public. We will move to the council.
I just had one about the, uh, going back to the cleaning thing for a minute with, um, with Director Gagan in the back. Sean Dewey, I asked a question about, um, agreed with Jacob's reply about, and what we just voted on and so forth, but with the nature of the public safety building now, the person that comes in, are they, um, background, security checked? Have to be bonded. How does that work?
We do security background checks on all of his cleaning people.
Okay. Thank you.
Otherwise, they need escorted service throughout the building. We don't have people to do that.
Thank you.
Yes, yeah.
I was gonna ask earlier, and I completely forgot, but how long do these last? Good for a year, two years?
The floors?
Yep.
I'm hoping it will be a few years, and we haven't done it in many, many, many years. I'm gonna kind of piecemeal that, so I don't spend a lot of money at once in different times and dispatch, so.
Don't let them get to the stage that are.
Yeah, hopefully not. Yeah, we're gonna, with the money, there was a lot of tonight. I'm not gonna spend five thousand dollars in a week. It's gonna be over time and piecemeal, because of the building and different things, and dispatches, gotta move upstairs, and things like that. It's just, it'll be wise spending, not to hold a lot at once, so.
Yep. Thank you. Anyone else?
You? Uh, upcoming public hearings, designation of topics for committee assignment, and scheduling of committee meetings. We do have one to schedule a workshop to tour town facilities.
Counselor Bishop, I believe, had mentioned that we should take a look at them.
I did. I called Jacob after our assistant town manager, after our last meeting the next day, or on the weekend, or whenever. I wasn't supposed to call him when he wasn't working, and he answered his phone anyway. And, um, the idea of the whole thing is that, uh, we've got a big decision to make about the maintenance of our buildings, but I'm aware in conversations we've had that some of us don't know, um, the status and condition of some of them, and haven't been to every area of them, so I thought it would be a good idea to look at the to- the totality of what we have in front of us, what needs to be dealt with on a maintenance end, and to put our eyes and boots on the ground, so that we're making an informed decision with what we have coming to our future to take care of these things, so.
Good idea.
Um, so primarily that's the sewer treatment facility, which is managed by others, but we have to take care of it. I mean, the cost of that, public safety, the marina, Public Works, and this building are, are those five are the, the primary. I, I would suggest that you choose a time that it's not right before a council meeting, only because I think that if you're gonna spend some time going from X to Y to Z, it would be difficult to do that, and, um.
Agreed. Uh, is this something that we should try to schedule one date for, for everyone? Or should we do two dates based on all of our schedules? What is feasible and reasonable for all the buildings involved? What do you think, what do you think is a good, good approach?
Come see us anytime.
I'm gonna say.
We're open all the time, so it doesn't matter.
Uh, i- if there's, we're gonna have to be posting these as meetings, if more than, if you all go at the same time.
So we could just, like, if some of us are familiar with some facilities and not others, we could opt to not to.
And what you could do is if, if you wanted to schedule time to go see, i- if you just let us know, we'll work with the department heads. You just let us know when you're, you have free time, and a- as I said, if you all go, if three of you go, we're gonna have to post these as meetings.
Yep, okay.
And I don't think that's actually the goal of this. You wanna see the buildings, but you're not gonna have a meeting about it. You're not gonna be making a decisions. You're just gonna walk.
So just reach out to you and tell them we can do it.
Well, you folks all know your schedules, so Public Works is there. You should know your schedules. Public Works is there Monday through Thursday from six to three, six to four, six to four thirty, something like that. Um, Monday through Thursday, Town Office, seven thirty to five thirty, Monday through Thursday, Public Safety. If you want, um, Deputy Chief Winchester, Director Gagan, or Deputy Chief Denning available. It would be a Tuesday to Friday, Tuesday to Thursday.
Monday to Friday.
Monday to Friday, okay, because you're there, yes, um.
Well, we can do that. The sergeant's on at night, you stop, and I can give you the assignment, you know.
So those are, and then the treatment facility, our superintendent is still out on medical leave, so, uh, it's not ours, Main Waters Superintendent. So that one, I'm gonna hold off and check on, if you can do that kind of a review. And that's the newest thing we own, so. You just let me know some times that are available, and what pers- particular facilities that you wanna see, then, um, Assistant Manager Grant and I will set some stuff up and let you know when you can do that. Does that, does that work for everybody?
Does everybody think that can be done in the next, what, two weeks probably? Is that possible?
Three.
Yep. Be like herding cats.
It will, it will, it will.
Seven people, five buildings, two weeks. What could go wrong?
And I'm sorry to dump that on you, but it's just, and the, the point is that.
No, it, it absolutely makes sense. I'm, I'm just, I, I, it, it, we can, if you let us know some times that you're available, we will make it available for you to be able to do that.
Sure.
Okay?
Absolutely. Anything else on that?
Before we move on.
Yes.
Uh, we, I don't know if this is when we're supposed to do this, but May seventh is the cemetery committee.
So that's all, that's all set, though?
It's all set.
May seventh, got it. Thank you. The usual time?
Five P M.
Yep. Thank you. Any other committee meetings we need to schedule? Perfect. Thanks, everyone. How do you do? Thanks, everyone. How do you do? So, then, all right. All right, uh, next is budget review. We have a number of departments that we're reviewing this evening. We're starting with the administration budget on page seven.
Good evening, council. Starting on page seven, first on our list for this evening is administration. Administration covers a number of things. It covers town manager, covers finance department upstairs, covers the town council, and it also covers election clerk, so it's kind of a, uh, a larger budget, as you can see. Uh, in keeping with what we've done, I'll just try to list some of the differences and not, uh, not go through the zero percent changes. And we're working to get, um, get it up on the screen here in a minute, so. The O-one line is the town manager's salary. I think that that's pretty self-explanatory. That's a contractual item, uh, between myself, or will be between myself and the, um, town council. Um, the O-two line is the finance department upstairs. That's what, um, uh, most people think of when they think of the town office. It's the, the five staff members that are upstairs, new this year. With this transition, um, with the town manager, it was identified, uh, the need for a finance, uh, director. Um, that was something that the town had, um, for a number of years. Um, when Susan was rehired, was hired here, uh, that position, she more or less filled that position. She was two for the price of one sort of, sort of deal, so. Um, with that, we will, we've created form, a more formal finance director position with this budget, um, without hiring an additional staff person. Um, the finance director will, uh, assume the responsibilities of department head, um, for the, um, four full-time staff members that are up there, so they will report, um, to that person, so. Uh, between that and some step increases, uh, for longevity, um, that is worth that eight point three percent is made of. The O-three line is the council salaries. You'll notice a reduction in that, and that's not because we want to pay you less. It is because we want to budget, um, more accurately to the number of meetings that you actually have in a year. You'll notice that, um, we previously budgeted over ten thousand dollars, and in twenty twenty-four, we expended sixty-five hundred of that, so. Typically, you have not had the number of meetings that we have budgeted for, so we're just simply trying, um, to reduce that to be a little bit more accurate. Moving down to the twenty-one line, manager's expense, again, that's, uh, that's a contractual item. The numbers, the, uh, the items that make up that, uh, town manager's cell phone reimbursement, dues, and continuing education expenses, uh, and again, those are all found in my employment contract, so that is the difference there. Office staff expenses, just a, uh, uh, eight hundred and thirty dollar reduction. Um, again, that's a line that typically we have, uh, trended low on, so just a, a little bit of a cut there. Down to the thirty-two line, software support, um, that is our, uh, Trio program. Trio is more or less the brains of our operation up there. It handles our motor vehicle, it handles our accounting, it handles payroll, it handles accounts payable. Basically, everything that we do upstairs is done through Trio, so uh, we anticipate, um, a slight increase with that, uh, on a yearly basis. Uh, the postage line, just a, a very small twenty-five dollar reduction there. Uh, let me see, what else? The advertising line, that was a reduction, um, due to that. Had previously, we had, we had, um, not used that as much, but that, we may want to relook at that, given the, um, closing, I guess, if you will, of the Bucksport Enterprise. Uh, the Ellsworth American is certainly far more expensive than the, um, Ellsworth, than the Bucksport Enterprise was, but I think what we have agreed to do among staff is to only advertise what is legally necessary, um, as far as public notices are concerned. Previously, in the enterprise, we could advertise a number of things. That was the benefit of having a community newspaper. We could take out a number of ads for fifty dollars and so be it. Um, but as a staff, I've made it clear to the department heads that we should be advertising only what's legally, what we're legally required to do, given the, the change in circumstance. The equipment maintenance and repairs line, there is a twenty-two percent increase there. That was mainly just the increase, um, the addition of pest control for this building. We've had work in, um, at this building for a number of years now, but I don't believe it was ever actually budgeted for. Uh, so that is, that's the difference there. Uh, where are we? Telephones, again, that's two percent. Those are just our actual costs there. The audit, um, that's, uh, through R H R Smith. They've audited, um, they've performed the town's financial audit for a number of years now. Anticipated increase there. Tax lien cost, a slight reduction there, just because we haven't, um, been filing as many things with the registry, I believe, as had previously been done. And legal cost is a considerable increase. Um, you can see, so far this year, we've already expended just under seventy thousand dollars in that line. Um, that's related to dam and landfill issues, and we don't anticipate those issues going away, so. Budgeting a little bit more for that. And M M A dues, again, those, you can see those increase a little bit every year as well. So overall, it's a six point nine nine percent increase. Happy to answer any questions I can.
Can we go over your manager's expense again, please?
Yes. That is, uh, cell phone, Main Town City County Management Association dues, uh, I A M C dues, and also five thousand dollars for continuing education. That's right on page eight also.
And as we demonstrated by the homework we now have, because of him answering his phone, I can tell you that he won't answer his phone, so.
Doesn't matter when it is.
Any other questions?
I like that continuing education part, by the way. I'll add that in there. That's great.
Agreed. Uh, Jacob, just a couple of questions. Um, I agree with you in terms of the, uh, I guess this is a statement. I agree with you on the, that advertising piece. Um, I believe that, given where we are with text notifications as well as the website, that we could use that to our advantage and do what's only legally necessary. Um, I, this is a nitpicky one. Um, uh, in twenty-two, there's, uh, a list of the town council expenses. There is a Paper Talks magazine ad for twelve hundred dollars. I will ask the question as to why that isn't online thirty-five. And I meant to email you about that, but, so I apologize. I hope we can do that instead of dropping on you here.
And truthfully, Mr. Mayor, the only answer I have to that is that it has always come out of that line, and that's probably not a, a good answer, but that's the best answer that I can, that I can give you.
That's a forever.
Okay.
I think, I think truthfully is because when this started, the individual that sells these was, he came before the council and, and, and got permission, got approval to advertise, and so I think that's why they were, it was stuck there because it was a decision of the council many years ago.
If you opt to change that, I won't have any issues with that. I don't know about the rest of the council, but, um.
Understood.
I can't believe I'm about to ask this question on the line that's going up sixty-six point six seven percent, but I'm about to. Are we comfortable, um, only increasing that line under legal costs? Sixty-six point six seven percent, where we spent seventy thousand dollars this year and we're, we're about to. Um, budget twenty-five. I'm sure you are, and I'd love to hear the rationale for everyone at, here and at home.
I talked to our attorney about dams and landfills. And the, the other expenditures over the past couple of years have also included, and still include, the Springfield. Which hopefully by Monday is a, uh, no longer a legal issue in town, but if what we've been told is gonna happen on Friday and Monday occurs, that, that takes that out, and that leaves those two higher thing, but we did ask our attorney for estimate over the next year related to the dam land, the dam and landfill.
Say it. Just say it.
Dam and landfill issues in, for that period. Yeah, the, the confluence of those three topics in that, in this past year have quite been retro that number.
Thank you for the explanation.
And to the, um, back to the advertising issue with the cost going up, um, I just think it's important to acknowledge that our code enforcement officer brought that to my attention, um, and some other things that, um, I'm trying to help him out with, and it's, it is a statewide issue.
It is.
And there's, it's, it's becoming a bigger topic, so I know, I know it's not a fun thing that, you know, Sue doesn't like to put annual or two-year Band-Aids on things, but I think this particular scenario, I think there's gonna be some changes coming. That's helpful for you. Thank you, Luke, for that.
Anyone else? Next is planning, and that's six, page eleven.
Yep, page eleven, planning. Um, this is essentially our code enforcement department. O-one line, uh, again, that's a code enforcement officer's salary, uh, three percent cost of living adjustment as well as a longevity step, uh, in August, so that is what that five point eighteen percent is. Planning board salary is the same thing that we did with, um, the town council, not looking to cut any wages by any means, but just to more accurately budget for the number of meetings that the planning board actually has. And with that, the O-three line, the planning board secretary, those lines go hand in hand. Um, if there are less meetings, you spend less money on a secretary. Part-time staff, the O-four line, you'll see a hundred percent decrease in this line. That's because, um, that project is, I would say, ninety-nine percent complete, or it's very close to being complete. We would anticipate that being complete, um, by the start of this fiscal year. That was, um, the code enforcement officers have been very proactive in scanning all of the plumbing permits, building permits, anything that we have in paper files down in the code enforcement officer, code enforcement office. Um, we have had, um, a part-time staff person scanning all those and uploading them to the G I S site. So now, real estate agents, residents, anyone can go on to the G I S site, type in an address, and see every single plumbing permit, every single permit that is associated, um, with that, and with that specific law. And I can tell you, we have gotten so many compliments on that. Um, it's a very, very handy tool to have, so. But that, uh, again, we're wrapping up on that, and so that is the, um, the reduction in that line. C E O expenses, um, just, I can't think, just an increase, I believe, in mileage and training fees in that line. There's a three hundred dollar increase there. Office supplies, uh, a reduction of four hundred dollars. Again, I, that's a, a little bit more in line to where that, um, line typically is. Postage line, code enforcement doesn't tend to send a whole lot of, um, of mail, so just again, a reduction to get closer to that. Down to Hancock, the ninety-three line, um, the planning commission dues. This was a topic that I, we've actually gone round and round a little bit for a few years. Um, and after seeing where the preliminary budget came in, this was a, a, um, a cut that we are recommending. We have not utilized the planning, the Hancock County Planning Commission since the comprehensive plan was implemented eight years ago, ten years ago.
Eighteen, two thousand eighteen.
Two thousand eighteen, so, um, again, in knowing what the council's goals were for this budget, this was an area. Again, it's something that we've talked about even prior to this, is, is it worth keeping it in our budget, and, um, so that's a recommendation that we have made there.
How many years have we been paying those dues since they, was there a time where they weren't?
They wouldn't, if, if you remember, they had a major theft.
Yes.
And they lost staffing, and we stopped paying dues because they were pretty out of business or, or on life support at the very least, and then, uh, Steve, former, Steve Fight became a member of the, the board of that organization and came back to the town to ask that we resume paying those dues. The council agreed to do that, and we've still never utilized their services, so. Even before you said, keep the budget as low as possible, that was on the list to come off the budget. There was a need for us to fund a group that we don't need. They were invited to a meeting to talk about what they could help the town with in terms of the dams issue and, and said that if we wanted to have a contract to pay them for, we could do that, and that, that wasn't exactly what I was asking.
Got it.
Well, we're very fortunate to have a full-time code enforcement officer, and in towns that don't, which is the majority of towns, especially smaller towns, these sorts of, yes.
Orland uses, has used them.
In, in Pittsfield, we u- we utilized our planning commission very heavily because it comes in handy when you're talking about zoning and writing ordinances, but again, we're fortunate to have a full-time code enforcement officer on staff, so our need is not quite as high as what communities around us would be. The last item, last line, is the ninety-seven line, the codification of ordinances. That's a reduction of sixty-six percent, or six thousand dollars, and again, that's because, um, the major expenses associated with that project are complete. This three thousand dollars is, um, the annual maintenance of the E-code three sixty, which we're in the process of, of, uh, implementing. And a part of that three thousand dollars is a yearly update where they will, um, update our ordinances to any ordinances that you have passed throughout the year. So overall, this budget is a reduction of eight point nine nine percent, approximately nine thousand dollars. Code enforcement officer is here in attendance, and he certainly can answer any questions that you might have.
Questions for Luke? Are you comfortable with this, Luke? Think we're good?
Good.
Page thirteen, the assessor's office.
The assessor's office, pretty self-explanatory. Um, the O-one line, the assessor's salary, the difference here, that's a reduction of twenty-nine percent. Uh, the difference being going from a full-time employee to a part-time, uh, employee. And so you will see, uh, reduction there. Just some, um, assessor's expenses. Um, that's, um, it can be for a number of things. Um, office supplies, uh, updates to that. That's the thirty-one line, excuse me, just a reduction there. The assessor didn't feel as though he needed, um, twenty-five hundred dollars in that line, so that was the reduction there. Software support, again, this is the assessing module in Trio. We anticipate an increase, um, in that, uh, each year. The printing line, just a, a hundred dollar increase there. And the only other difference is, um, document scanning. The assessor indicated that, I believe, he wants to do a similar undertaking as to what the code enforcement. code enforcement department has done in scanning documents and being able to upload them and various maps, so that's what that line is. Overall, it's a reduction of twenty-three percent. I'm happy to answer any questions. I can tell.
Twenty-one thousand give a taste.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Twenty thousand three forty-six. All good there?
Looks like we are.
Okay, municipal building, um again, the oh one line, the custodian salary, that was the cleaning contract that we discussed at your last meeting. Um as Council Rabs mentioned, I sent you all an email with a breakdown of the costs associated with each building. Um and as I've s- as I've said, I'm I'm very confident with this building that between a combination of staff and with some assistance from the facilities manager, that would be, we are very capable of doing that in-house, so very comfortable um with that line being removed. The building supply is just a small reduction to get us a little closer to where we uh historically have been. Um a three percent reduction in building repairs and maintenance. Sixteen percent for heating fuel, again, those are actual numbers that that could potentially go even lower depending upon where our um heating fuel price gets locked in for this coming year. Electricity, slight reduction there, and then uh also a reduction in water, so overall, this is a uh decrease of forty-eight point five percent. For twelve thousand two twenty-six. Again, that's mostly just the cleaning.
The building repairs and maintenance line just spurred a thought randomly that if there was the implementation of a facilities person, they would be spending money on things like paint and nails and jingles and all that, where where would that come from as a whole?
Depending on how big the project was, it could come out of the municipal building reserve if it was a if it was a larger project. Otherwise, it would be in that line.
If there's nothing else, we move on to insurance, insurance and benefits, page seventeen.
Okay, this is the big one for the for the evening, insurance and benefits. Eighty-six line is workers' compensation, that's a two point six six percent increase there. Uh paid family medical leave, eighty-nine, that is a new um that's a new law that is in place, at least for now, and that is one percent of all of our wages. Um that's, I believe that uh we had talked about that previously, so that's a a brand-new line item there. Uh social security, that obviously fluctuates with wages, uh a three percent increase there. Um group life, two point three four percent. I just add that all of these lines fluctuate with wages, that's the the best thing that I can can explain. Main state retirement, uh a slight decrease there, and that is a that line fluctuates depending upon our staff, uh our staffing levels. We have some staff that choose to participate in main state retirement, we have some staff that do not. So as of July one, this would be um what what our contribution would be to that. Health insurance, that's an eight point nine four percent increase. Really, the biggest driver there would be the um addition of the um facilities director and also uh it's it's my health insurance. Uh we would have two additional people on um town health insurance there.
But it it also reflects a forty thousand dollar reduction.
That is true.
Going to Allegiant.
Right.
Very true.
Absorbs the the percentage increase estimated in.
Yeah.
Right.
And that's that thing, so the net eight point nine four is the addition of two plans, the subtraction of the forty thousand dollar savings and the increase in health insurance premium.
Right. Each each premium per employee was an increase of approximately four percent, so. Income protection is two point five one percent. Uh the the depression in um ninety-seven line unemployment, that was um due to I don't believe that was previously charged to the sewer department, and so that was the intent there that they would be paying that. There's one employee upstairs. Essentially, half of everything that she does gets charged to the sewer department because she's a utility billing clerk, she does a lot of the work for the sewer department, so that is um that's that is the decrease there. General liability is twelve point five percent. That came from Rachel and talking with uh our insurance carrier. And no anticipated increase in the public liability. Do I answer any questions I can? I know it's a it's a big one.
This will be contingency, page thirty.
Contingency on page twenty-one, that's essentially a miscellaneous line, um and there are expenses that truly don't have a home anywhere else, they tend to go under there, historically, um the town has an annual shredding event um that we are required to do, that typically happens in July, so that comes out of this account. Um and the council, for a number of years, I think at least since COVID, has funded um Christmas gifts for staff. That's come out of this line, and also the annual employee luncheon um comes out of this.
I will ask the question, we're comfortable with that number?
I am, because the, again, these are just illegal dues that.
Good, yeah. This is where a lot of the spring fountain.
Perfect, thank you.
It's not defending herself from.
That's right, nope, that answer I was, I don't know if I was hoping for it, but I, it was at least a partial assumption there, okay. Uh IT, page twenty-three.
Page twenty-three, you'll see that this is essentially a flat budget. Um zero point three four percent increase, and I would let um IT Director Moral come up, he can speak to some of the projects uh planned for this year.
Good evening, how are you?
Good.
First thing I presented to you folks was feel free to ask any questions about IT relationships or how we work, things like nature so that you're aware. What we try to do each year is try to take the same chunk of money and make a multi-year plan, so that we don't have this heartbeat pattern or suddenly we have a big swoop of funds that needed at any given time. And this budget reflects that, uh this year, we finished up a or are finishing up a network um transition, so we are a uniform network rather than piecemeal across the city, everything's up to date and current. What you're gonna see going into next year, if we go down to the uh next page, if you would, George?
This one?
Yes, sir. Under the thirty-two line, a big chunk of that stuff we we do each year. Uh I'll point out the antivirus, the antivirus is actually our cyber defense at this point. We don't list off the vendors we use, we don't list off the software we use. But under that, we've been able to put endpoint protection on our systems, it's partially deployed right now, which means it's a monitoring system that'll alert me if there's something that isolates the the terminal. Um we've also got background looking at our Google account, so if something's fishy there, if some some data gets taken out, we get some logins from Hong Kong, something like that, they'll shut it down and notify us, so that's all included in that cost for next year. We're partially implemented this year because we weren't quite funded to that level, so I appreciate support there for our security. Uh we did eliminate the meeting streams, which is called the Granicus server, we've had many meetings internally and decided that hardware needs to be upgraded. We decided we didn't want to commit to that, there's some other alternatives we can use, either self-hosting or streaming through YouTube, they're just as effective online. A matter of fact, during this meeting, the Granicus box kicked out, we had to kick it back on. So those are the reliability issues we've had going on, so we've eliminated that contract. Um and otherwise, if you read down through that list, those are those are the same amounts that we pay for for those items to begin with, Google, uh team is our backup software, the website, um Adobe. Which unfortunately, Adobe would like to purchase and be done, they no longer have that model, everything's subscription, so every year we're not paying for it. Uh pendant alarms, there's a security system inside this building, uh battery backups, we know our power grid's not the best in the world. And if you get a sudden surge on a computer, you can lose the computer, so we spend about three hundred dollars or a hundred and fifty dollars per computer to make sure we don't lose a thousand dollar device each time that happens, so we replace the batteries and we uh distribute new UPSs each year, we have a balance on that. And then the NINA ID is actually allows us to be nine-to-one compliant in our phone system because it's all digital. So according to the phone company, all phones ring at eighty-nine Franklin Street. But we know that's not accurate, so we pay a subscription to be able to manage that ourselves, to keep ourselves safe, if anyone were to dial nine-to-one, they know where you are. And to next year's uh programs, we've got a split in the forty-one line, year one of two, as you can see there, that's our hardware upgrade. We have a virtual system, which basically means a big piece of hardware. Inside that big piece of hardware is little digital things that I see and can create. It's almost like, uh I was gonna say a lab, that'd go down in the conversation, but I can balance stuff, I can bring them down, put them back up as we need them rather than buying and swapping hardware all the time. So that system also relays to what we call a disaster recovery node. So every five years, we replace each piece, so this is the main node this year, in three years, it'll be time to replace the disaster piece. That's a collaborative purchase with the RSU. The entire purchase price is expected around a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, so the town will commit thirty of it, twenty-five percent. Uh that way we use uh the best we can rather than all of us trying to buy our own items. And the second one, surveillance recorder, if we recall, in twenty eighteen, we put a surveillance system down across the waterfront, some other buildings, that's worked very well. What we're finding now is that that equipment has to get rebooted, the recording part of it, the cameras are still fine, I think we've replaced two cameras over the last seven years. So the brain of the operation needs to be changed, and technology has changed. There's a lot more tools we could be using, based on the hardware we already have, by replacing the head unit for recording. And then the maintenance and repair is the fifty-one line, that's moved up to fifteen hundred as of last year and maintains there. That's a little tidbits, it's a bracket we need here, or wire we need to run for something else, or they get these wires off the floor, it means we're putting something in the ceiling, and rather than trying to tap a project for seventy-two dollars, we have a chunk of money, this year we spent thirteen hundred dollars so far, and I think that's where we'll where we will land. Does that make sense, too fast, too slow, any questions about that?
You talked about adding a camera to the waterfront, under, is that included in?
That is not included in that, that has surfaced and gone away and surfaced and gone away, happy to engage with that conversation, but is not currently budgeted.
Right, now it's not on the table.
Correct.
I I just would like to add that this IT contract covers all of our computer systems in all of our buildings, in all of our vehicles, in all of our departments. I I don't know exactly how many that is, but it a significant number. It also covers the the video work for our, all of our meetings. It covers contracting for our our cellphone systems. It covers contracting for our copier systems as well um as hello, it doesn't work. But help arrives quickly and we often have Dylan and and for a budget of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, I can tell you that we couldn't hire one full-time IT professional with benefits for that amount of money and do all of this. This agreement with RSU twenty-five has been as advantageous a contract as the town could have done and not only brought us into this century in terms of technology, but saved the town a ton of money in that endeavor. And Jim and his staff have been amazing in this relationship.
Appreciate that.
Very, very fortunate to have.
Where's your office now?
I remain at the central office, Dylan's behind us, we moved our tech room down here, we moved all the networking equipment over here and the streaming center, so Dylan works out of this office, and I work out of the central office at the RSU.
Servers are where?
Servers are at the public safety building.
Okay.
And then we have a backup redundant system in the school system, and I define that fairly if you like, but I'd rather not display on on public.
I just.
Yeah, absolutely, I get it.
How you keep them cool.
Yeah, and we actually put in a cooling system last year, which was timely and appreciated.
The the heat pump you approved for the public safety
Yeah.
building was for the purpose of keeping the servers cool.
And if that were to go out, you have notification that lets you know that temperatures are going up?
Yeah, I have uh heartbeats on things that tells me, hey, you've got a problem, and then if we need to, we can go to the disaster recovery node.
Okay.
I've seen you be extremely frugal in the past with uh mouses and computer parts and cords and your office was a mess last time I saw it in a different building, but where's all that now, do you still like, is that all?
Anything that's been purchased with town funds is stored here in this office, so if you walked in, you're gonna see a mini version of what you're talking about here. More organized because Dylan has control of that and a much smaller environment. Uh other assets that we have are still at the RSU, which is a very large office up up there, and we do work with recyclers like to buy a mouse. If I'm gonna use or I'm gonna reuse one if I can. Um and if we need something, we generally, we we are very good about keeping town and school products and items and purchases separate. But to transfer a mouse down here, it's a lot cheaper for me to do it for two dollars because it's sitting on a shelf at the school rather than twelve dollars from Amazon when possible. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, that's enlightening.
Yeah, it's nice to say, especially with tech rises, and it is not all me. Um Jacob and Sue have helped keep that level down, like the split purchase, we're gonna pay part of it this year, next year that balances that section out, and we get what we need. So it does balance out, and I I only bring down what we need, uh Jacob and I discussed today creating a five-plus-year tech plan. We laugh a little bit about tech plans because it's a it's a one-year guarantee, it's a three-year good notion and a five-year guess in the bucket. But it's always good to have it written down so you know some of those things that are coming.
This is the most exciting budget page, just so.
Oh, we got rich next, come on.
Thank you.
I, lastly, I would echo Town Manager Lassard's um sentiments from someone who in a previous life in a different municipality had a nightmare technology contract, IT contract. I can't begin to tell you how appreciative I'm I'm I am with the relationship that we have with the RSU. Very much so. Next is economic development, page twenty-five, I'll just go over the oh one line, and then I will let Community and Economic Development Director Rotella um go over some of the other line items, so that you'll see there is a five point one percent increase, and that's the three percent cost of living adjustment and then a ten-year longevity step in November. So with that, I'll turn it over to.
Uh dues and travel is gonna drop by fourteen point two nine percent uh from thirty-five hundred to three thousand. Um getting rid of a little bit of the work from having to do on the waterfront and maintenance and having to travel to Bangor Brewer uh to get supplies, should save about five hundred dollars there. Uh training costs, gonna keep that flat, last time we used that for the um Economic Development Committee, so that they could be trained on on how to be on a board. Um postage, as you can see, traditionally, I don't spend more than five dollars. Um so we're gonna drop that down to a hundred in case something were to happen, especially now where we don't have the luxury of having the Bucksport Enterprise and we need to get something out to a certain group. Uh advertising, there's a slight increase of twenty percent because we don't have the Bucksport Enterprise and advertising elsewhere is considerably much more higher. Uh telephone, I'm requesting uh no refund, I I don't wanna be reimbursed for telephone, so I've eliminated that cost to help out with the town. Um and then the only other one is non-municipal agency funding, of the twenty thousand dollars that used to come from Main Street Bucksport proposing five thousand. Um the remainder of the thirty thousand five twenty consists of nine thousand for the Friends of Fort Knox, which a big portion of that is for the fireworks for the Holiday Lights Parade. One thousand five hundred twenty dollars to the Village uh for Ghostport. And Wednesday's on Main for five thousand and ten thousand dollars for the Bucksport Bay Festival. Next year is the country's two-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday, so it'd be nice to have that ten thousand um for a starting point. And the overall budget decrease is four point one one percent. And the overall budget decrease is four point one one percent.
So you're foregoing the town paying for your cellphone?
Yes.
Cause you don't use it, you don't get calls on it?
I won't be getting calls Friday, Saturday, Sundays anymore.
So you're not gonna get calls Monday through Thursday?
Uh, they'll call the, they'll call the town office phone.
Assistant Manager Graham, can you come back up here?
This was not my idea, I wanna say that.
No one's in trouble.
We have other town employees that, uh, are very faithful to answering their phones as well, that, uh, the phones are paid for, correct?
That is correct.
Uh, would the rest of the council, uh, support, uh, my recommendation that this line item be reinstated?
Sir, I would respectfully decline because seriously, the amount of calls that I get is gonna significantly dec- decrease. And we're gonna need to get a phone for the person that's the facilities director, who will get a lot more phone calls than I do.
We'll table it, talk about it later.
Okay.
It'll still reduce, your, your budget line, your to- overall budget will still be lower than last year. Even if you add back in the cellphone reimbursement.
I really think it would be better if I went to the facilities director. I don't want to argue over, but I, it's just another line that's gotta go into that other, I, I mean, it's.
They're gonna have to have a phone too.
Right, that's what I mean, so we're gonna have to pay for that. It, my phone is seriously, will slow down now because I won't be doing the waterfront stuff. It's, 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 I don't.
You're gonna have to talk to your supervisor. He doesn't listen to his supervisor.
We, we, we can certainly talk about that, um. Just cause I'm gonna, we'll put that off till another time, um. Which I hate doing, but that's what we're gonna do on this one. Um, I can tell right now. Uh, Rich, just real quick, um. When, uh, two things. I am curious under marketing, um. You can, you plan on doing ads, sponsorships and commercials? And let me be clear, I'm not asking that question with an agenda, except that I support that. I just wanna make sure that, that you're not changing anything there other than what's happened at the enterprise.
Under advertising?
Yes. Uh, marketing, excuse me, marketing, the ninety two line.
Um, we're, we're gonna have to go less. Um, I was using, uh, TIF funds to fund the projects. And, um. It'd be, it'd be fewer. It'd be fewer things. It'd be, it'd be a lot less frequent because the cost of marketing is ju- it's, it's not at the level. We were spending with the use of TIF funds, almost twelve thousand dollars, so, um, sixty five hundred will ju- will scale back. And we don't, Wednesday, uh, Main Street Buxport's not the chamber, so those extra funds that went towards that part of the marketing. Um, we'll do more social media, which doesn't have the cost. And, uh, does have a good outreach and, um, should help pick up some of the slack there. And we, and, and to be fair, we also, we partner, um, part of the Friends of Fort Knox budget. We partner with the Friends of Fort Knox to help offset that as well. So that's, it's a great partnership. Uh, Dean is fantastic to all of our businesses on this side of the river. And it's great to work with him because we're on the same page. I realize that we need those hundred thousand visitors that go to the fort. And Dean realizes those visitors need somewhere to go to eat, have an ice cream, maybe take a nice leisurely stroll on the walkway, so. That, that works out there. So that, that, that goes to the, to the fort. It, it, it works very well.
Okay. And when you, in, under, on the ninety four line, um, miscellaneous non-municipal agencies, I am just curious what that five thousand is. Is it contingency or does it go, is it, I'll ask the question and, and let you answer it. How about that?
Uh, so, uh, over three thousand dollars went to the comedian.
Okay.
Uh, so it was to fund events that Main Street Buxport, uh, did or other things, um. I think we're pretty close to the five thousand. I will say there's a project that's gonna come forward to the town and if that. Decisions are gonna have to be made and where, we are where we're at. And we'll have to be a lot more tighter at Economic Development Committee on what we do, uh, agree to forward, uh, for approval. And try to get more for our money that way and ask the, the groups that are, are doing it, that they need to pony up as well.
Okay. Oh, that answers my question. Any other questions for you? Thank you, Rich. Appreciate your efforts on this. Last one is way at the back of the book or quite near it, page seventy three.
Before we move on to sewer, there's just one thing that I wanna say. There's been a number of budgets that we have, uh, presented to you this evening. That have been an overall reduction. They've been a decrease over last year. And that is not to pat myself or our town manager on the back. That's a reflection of our staff. And the tremendous amount of thought that has been put into these budgets, um, given the council's very clear direction to us. So I just want to recognize our staff for, um, their efforts through this budget process. Sewer, this is overall, not a whole lot of change o- over last year. One point seven one percent increase. I would just go over maybe some of the bigger items would be the twenty five line. Um, two hundred and forty two percent decrease. That is, um, again, we have a staff member, um, in the, um. In the finance department upstairs that half of all of her wages and benefits. As I said previously, are charged to, to the sewer department. Uh, and so that is what, um, the O one and the twenty five line are. Um, other big factors would be, um, down to the, let me see, the seventy one line. Uh, heating fuel. Again, that's a big increase, a little bit of an increase there. Uh, that could, again, fluctuate depending upon where our, um, where our fuel price comes in. Um, and the, really, the only other big one would be the eighty nine line. Which is the, um, that is the loan, um, that you have. So again, that goes down a little bit every year. So overall, really, again, it's a one point seven one percent increase over last year. Happy to try and answer any questions. Unfortunately, um, as we've said, our, um. Our foreman for the sewer department is, uh, still out on medical leave, but I can try to answer any questions that you have.
Just the only question will be that when we review, um, revenue budgets, it will match the expenditure for this.
It, you're going to be seeing a request for a sewer rate increase.
Right.
In, in this year. It's been since two thousand fifteen, since there were sewer rate. And that was established part of the debt service being established on this account, so.
But it will match.
How we match, you might not like.
Right.
Find another bill that hasn't gone up in the last ten years.
That's right.
Um, and the town manager gets a pass on her cellphone because she has to, she keeps a track on her email, so. Uh, even though I, I have fewer and fewer opportunities.
Few things can make my phone ring out loud when it's not supposed to ring. And those are family-related.
You still get a pass.
I, I applaud.
I applaud.
But my, one of my granddaughters had surgery today. I got information about that. And one of my husband's daughters is looking for her father, so I, I got one of those too.
You still get a pass, as much as I, you know, would love to teach you.
Oh, you already did, that's good.
Cuts that you have made, a total, a total decrease line. I didn't see a total. Because obviously there are increases that have been contractual and insurance and things like that, but. Do you also have a, a total number that maps to the. That's that everyone has put the effort into making?
Um. We could figure that. Essentially, it would really be the twenty twenty six initial line minus the twenty twenty six manager line. Um, I could, I don't have my cellphone on me, but that would more or less give you that, that number.
On page five?
On page five, yes.
So approximately just under six.
It's not gonna be exact, but, you know, again, we start, we put everything out there, we put everything into the budget, all the requests. See where we end up and then we go back and that's when the, the cuts start, so.
Yes, that's the, the, this is the, this is the initial. This is this, X minus Z is the, this is the overall increase between.
Okay.
That one and that, but if you take this minus this, it's around five, I think that's the.
It's close to it, yeah. It's in just under six hundred thousand.
Just under six hundred thousand dollars in.
Overall, okay. I just think it's important to note because of the increases that have gone up. I think it's important to acknowledge the work that went into the amount of potential cuts and trying to counteract the increases. So I just wanted that as a, as a dollar figure, that's all. Thank you.
Yeah, it's five hun- it's just under five hundred and eighty five thousand dollars, and that's a great point, Council Bishop. Some increases just have to happen because of decisions that, quite frankly, this council has made prior to these workshops. Um, but as the Assistant Town Manager has pointed out, and you have too, the, our, the people running these departments have really tried to. Follow the tasks set before them by us and. Any other questions overall for Jacob or Sue or any of our department heads that are here this evening?
The next meeting will include Public Works and revenues and a few others. And it's on May eighth.
Yep.
And you'll also be deciding then a budget to send out to public here. For the first meeting, which is the second Thursday, so. Either bring a sleeping bag or a sharp pencil and we'll see where we end up on the eighth. But that will be, that's, there is not a budget meeting next week. The next budget, the next budget meeting and council meeting are May eighth. And I wanna recognize again Assistant Manager Graham and, um, Finance Director Wilson for, uh, all of their work. In addition to, of course, all of the department heads. This has been a human's effort. I, not that it always isn't, but. I've not seen as challenging a budget as this one in a long time. There's still a lot of unknowns related to things that we can't control at this level in terms of education funding and other things. So that, that will be a, a matter that we'll have to deal with in one way or another, or we won't. I'm not sure yet, but. We can only control what we had, what we're doing right here with, on behalf of the town, and so that's where we have to focus.
If there's nothing else, Chair raises a motion to adjourn. Called in favor, opposed.